So let's get started. So, welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Hall or City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022, and it is six o'clock. Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Here.
Councilmember Lintell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gagliotti.
Here.
Mayor Kerr.
Here. So Beatrice, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
B, you're muted.
At the Pledge of Allegiance. That's why. The United States of America. To the Republic from which it stands. One nation under God. And it was evolved. Liberty, justice.
This is for all. Thank you. We'll move on to public comments. General public comments must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. Any public comment?
Mayor, before we go to public comment, do we want to do the invocation?
Karen, do you see any? I see no hands.
Mayor, I think we should do the invocation before we go to public comment.
Okay, my apologies. I'm sorry, I was a step ahead of myself. Reverend Helen, will you please lead us in invocation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Almighty God, please speed the day when all meetings can be held in person. But tonight, bless everyone who is participating in this meeting and empower them to do really good things. And we thank you for your presence with us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Okay, let's go back out to public comment. Any, anyone have anything to say on an item not on the agenda? Karen, could you help me out here? Do you see any?
I am not seeing any hands raised physically or on.
And I'm, I'm sorry to keep checking in on my reality, but is Scott Donaldson still standing with his hand over his heart?
Oh, I am not. I'm seated.
Okay.
I think it might be your internet connection, Mayor.
Okay, that's just my computer. My, my apologies. Okay, so bring it back to the council and we'll move on to item five, which is an introduction of our new reserve officer, Beatrice Pareda. Let's turn this over to City Manager Gerton.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, we're pleased to have a, an old face and a new face joining us, but I'm going to turn it over to the chief to go ahead and do the introduction for us.
Thank you, boss, Mayor, and council members. Thank you for having us here tonight. I am extremely pleased. We are welcoming a new reserve officer who used to be an officer with us, went on to do other things, and is now thankfully coming back. Officer Pareda reached out several months ago, inquiring if she could come back to work with us, and we said absolutely, but we had to go through all the hoops with background investigations and everything else that it takes to hire a police officer. And this happened several months ago. I'd like to point out to the council, it's very hard to get good officers, and it takes a long time. And a lot of times, right in the middle of hiring them, somebody else comes in and snatches them up before you can get to them. So we're grateful that Beatrice is back. Beatrice has history with the city. Beatrice was actually the first female officer ever hired by the City of Delray Oaks Police Department, and we're glad to have that first officer back. She started with us in a reserve capacity. She'll be going through her field training, which hopefully will be shortened, since she's very aware of all of our policies and procedures. We're going to get her up to date and get her back in the swing of things. But I'd love to turn it over to Beatrice for a second with a heartfelt welcome from myself, the police department, and the city staff. We're all actually very excited to have her back. So Beatrice, hello, welcome back. And if you'd like to say a word or two, the floor is yours.
Oh, well, thank you very much. I'm really grateful for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to join on, on the team full-time, and I'm going to do my best. So thank you for having me. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Beatrice. And with that, you're welcome to stay and listen to all the interesting things that the council members are now going to talk about, or you can go, and I won't hold it against you on your next performance evaluation. So I will turn this back over to the mayor. Very much, Mayor, for.
Beatrice should, Beatrice should stay to listen to all of the comments of people welcoming her.
Well, that's true too, yeah.
So don't jump off you.
Oh, no.
So speaking of which, are there any comments, Ms. Lintell?
Yes, welcome back, Beatrice. I'm so happy to see you again.
Thank you, nice seeing you too. You too.
Stay longer this time.
I will, I will, thank you. I will, thank you.
Good. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll also say, welcome back, Beatrice. It's always great to have quality officers back, and you know, it's great to see you again. And like, Councilmember Lintell just said, hopefully you can stay with us for a long time.
I will, thank you. I'm happy to be here.
B, I can only talk for myself, but as a staff member, you're a joy, and I'm so glad that you're back.
I'm, oh, thank you. I, I missed seeing the faces, so I'm so happy to be back. I think I'm.
Okay, I want to round it out and say, welcome back, B. I'm glad your, your journey has brought you back to us.
Yes, thank you.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone in the public or anyone on the council? You're welcome. Does anyone want to pull any item on the consent agenda? Let's go out to the public first, anyone? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Anyone on the council want to pull any item off of the?
I believe Dennis Allian had his hand up, but was muted.
Yeah, he did.
All right, Ms. Shirley.
Oh, no, I think, is, did Dennis raise his hand to speak?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I, I was trying to raise the hand. I had.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Financials. I'd like to have that pulled.
Mayor, if you're delayed, we want to, Dennis would like to pull item B two from the consent agenda.
Correct.
If we may have lost her.
My apologies, my internet went down.
Yeah. So Mayor, Dennis Allian requested that we pull F, firms, B, to the financials.
Is the mayor back?
And Ms. Shirley?
Um, yeah, just, I had a few questions. I'd like to pull C one, their strategic planning grid, and then just one comment about C three, and then also C eight.
Hang on just a second. Okay, so I'm sorry, I did not, I did not hear what Dennis wanted pulled?
B two, financials.
B two. Okay, so let's start with B two. Yes, Mr. Allian, comment, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. The question is probably fairly easy to answer. I didn't see a balance sheet, so my question has to do with my, that longstanding debt to Mr. Infantino and his successor organization. Is that still on the books? And, and I don't necessarily need an answer right now if John doesn't have it, but I'd like to know what the balance is. How much is the non-interest-bearing portion, and how much is the interest-bearing portion?
John, did you want me to answer that, or do you want to answer it, or, or Mayor? Okay.
Are you okay with us answering that question, Mayor? Did we lose the mayor?
I, I'm here, but apparently I'm two minutes behind, so yes, please.
Okay. Yeah, so go ahead, Roberto, and then I'll follow on.
Okay, yes, Australian, it is still on the books. Can't give you the exact number off the top of my head, I'm looking for the audit from this last year. It's definitely the principal still there, 1.2 million, and it's gone up by at least 200,000 in interest. I'll have to double check the number, but it is still there.
Yeah, and so there is a plan for the mid-year budget review to talk about strategies for how we want to handle the, the long-term debt going forward with some of the reserves that we have as an option. There's other legal considerations with the debt to consider when we make a plan, because when we do start paying it, then that triggers a timeline for when it needs to be paid. So we want to make sure once we actually get into. When are we required to start paying it? And once we do start paying it, then what the implications are for that, and we want to make sure that we're set up to actually fulfill the requirement once we get, get ourselves into that stage of the plan. So, so look, look back, tune back in around mid-year, I'll be sure to make sure you're aware.
Yeah, thank you, because I, I thought that that was going to be a mid-year review item this past fiscal year, and that we were going to start paying off that. The non-interest-bearing portion, or whatever part we had, one of them we have to pay off first, which I think is the non-interest-bearing portion.
Right, and the trick, the trigger for when we have to start doing that is, once we start making progress on actually developing the property out there yet, and we're not there yet on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just through, oh, actually through Mayor, or John, I'm going to go ahead and take over until the mayor can find a better location to come in. On B one, is that been satisfied? Can we add that back to, there hasn't been a motion or second to vote on adopting the consent agenda. Can we just put this right back in? I'll ask either Alex or, or John.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
All right, okay, so B two is, is still, it's in the consent agenda, and questions being asked, questions being answered. And then Councilmember Shirley, I got a partial list of the items you want to pull. C one, the strategic planning grid, what were the other three, the other two?
Uh, C three and C eight.
Okay, C three and C eight. Would you be amenable to voting on the consent agenda as is, with the exceptions to C one through eight, C one, C three, and C eight, and then come back and, and open a discussion?
Sure, that would be fine. My, my question, my, for C one and C three, it's, it's super quick, so I don't know if we want to tackle that.
No, let's go ahead and do it, that's good.
Okay, um, on the strategic planning grid, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm asking these questions now, but I've been thinking more about this. So Mr. Gerton, on the, the fiscal, ensure fiscal stability goal, where it says, presents to the city council for a direction of business development outreach plan, I know that's marked done, and you had mentioned that there would be an ad hoc committee, an economic development committee, and set up, and I was just wondering if we had any progress on that.
Oh, yeah, that'll come back to you in September for consideration.
September, okay, great, perfect. And then you had also mentioned on the grid, let's see, it's on the enhanced cities effectiveness and efficiency goal, you had marked that we would have the elected and appointed officials' handbook for this month, and I, I know it's not on the agenda, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified. It was, it was marked as on target, but we're not covering it tonight.
Oh, yeah, that's part of the, the larger project with the personnel manual, and that just takes a long time to work through the process, because it's a wholesale replacement of our personnel manual and our personnel policies, and so that has to be done systematically and vetted with the staff and all of that, so.
Okay, yeah, that's great, so maybe you get to put that in revised next time.
Yeah.
Um, so that's all, that's all I have for C one. On C three, I just wanted to make sure we, that resolution is edited, so it says measure B and not measure F.
Yeah, we caught that, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, that was it, we can go back and vote on the consent, except for C eight.
C eight, with the exception of C eight. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion from the council for. So moved.
I second.
And so we have Donaldson.
I'll second.
Motion, and we've got Pat as a second. Okay, Karen, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Shirley.
Before we start, actually, Scott, would you, with, with your motion, would you accept a consent agenda and then explicitly say that you, with the exception of C eight, that that's pulled for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Would you, would you make the motion?
Yeah, I recommend approval of the consent agenda, except for item C eight, which is pulled for discussion.
Okay, great. Mayor, if you would, I'll fin, I'll finish this item, and then I'll, I'll hand this back to you if you're in a better place. Okay, great, okay. Um, so Karen, would you call, or have a roll call?
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Lintell.
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gagliotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye.
Okay, Mayor, you want to take the controls?
Sure, sure, let's, I hope this is better. And so, thank you for that, and so C eight, we're going to have a discussion. Ms. Shirley, did you want to kick that off?
Um, sure, I know that, I had talked to John Gerton earlier about, you know, this contract covers both financial and our HR services. And I had, I had a question from him, asking the percentages for the contract. And he, in his estimation, it was about 730, which is good to know. And I, I noticed on the contract, there is no, when you look at the scope of services, it doesn't say anything about HR services. It does talk about the financial services. So I'm wondering if we'd want to edit that scope of services so that it does include, you know, human resources, and, and even talking about sort of the percentage that, you know, knowing that that can change throughout the year, but I think, I think we just need to be, you know, really clear what we're, what this contract is going to apply, apply to. That's it. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, do you want me to address that, Mayor? I, I didn't know if anybody else wanted to join in first. Okay.
Why don't you start, please?
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is a stop, staff augmentation contract, so it's a little up in the air with who, who's going to be providing what services based on the needs that the city has at any given time. So I have talked with the RGS folks about how we factor in the actual costs for HR people, because, yeah, that is going to be a transition that we're going for, so we will have to come back and modify this with the actual rate sheet for the HR staff. We just didn't have that at that time, and we're already into the need for Roberto to continue the financial services portion of this.
It's.
So, so. Yeah, so, so is this, yeah, 198,000, well, we, that number won't change then, when we, when we get the HR portion of it.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, so we'll, we'll get an edited contract then.
Well, yeah, we'll come back and do it. Yeah, we'll just do a simple modification of the contract with the new rate sheet with the HR folks.
Got it, okay. Thank you, that's very helpful.
I mean, just, just for, I mean, those are generally just exhibits, right? I mean, you, you have the, the overall boilerplate with all the terms and conditions and everything in it, and then, and then the, and the outside number, and then, and then just, like you said, like a race, like it's an exhibit that you, that's where your, your scope of work that you attach to it.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's pretty minor modification, but yeah, it's something that we want to bring back, so everybody's clear on what the final contract is, yeah.
Mr. Donaldson, Ms. Lintell, any questions, comments on this item?
Now, do we have to vote on the particular item since we, because we recused it from the consent agenda?
Yeah, we require a separate motion, sorry, Mayor.
No, I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, and I also have no questions. That was good clarification from the city manager.
Um, I just had one question about it. A, I, I too like the divvying up of the responsibilities, and I do notice that on our financials, there are two line items, so I, this was the first time I'd noticed that. So it does divvy it out on our financial reports. Um, but the, the question I had was, so it's a three-year contract, and it appears the 198K is the first year, but I did not see any, how do we negotiate the final two years?
The one-year contract with two-year extensions, so.
Right. And so the first year is 190.
Right, so they're, they're optional extensions, so if we opt to extend it, then we'll negotiate the amount for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that was clear for everybody, that it was three, the potential for three years. Okay, uh, uh, let's go to the public. Have any questions, comments on this item? Karen, are you seeing any?
I am not seeing any.
Okay, let's bring it back to the council, and I will entertain a motion to approve or deny this particular item.
I, I move that we approve item eight under C, consider a regional government services contract.
Second.
Okay. Any, and last comments or questions? All right, Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Lintell.
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gagliotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye, so it passes unanimously. Thank you for all that dialogue and question answering. We're going to move on to old business, but we don't have any new business this evening. The first item is to consider a commercial lease agreement. I come for the city building in our public works here. We'll turn that over to Mr. Gerton.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, so most of you will remember that in 2019, we were looking for additional revenue sources. We've talked, you know, city manager pick, talked about the need to diversify our revenue streams. Jeff, when he was the city manager, continued that conversation. We're always looking for new revenue sources, because we do have a limited revenue stream here, and we can be easily impacted by downturns in the economy. And so in the interest of that, in 2019, the city entered into a lease agreement, very similar to this proposed lease agreement with one of our cannabis businesses, to utilize the, what I call the barn, but the building down in the public works yard as storage and kind of a distribution operation for the cannabis business. That didn't work out, didn't pan out. That lease is now, since gone, we got a little bit of revenue from that, but not what we were anticipating. And so Council, Councilmember Donaldson came to me with this idea that he had had some conversations and had developed a relationship with Jake Reisdorf, who's with us tonight, who many of you will know is the young entrepreneur from Carmel, who started the Carmel Honey Company, and I don't want to take the wind from his sails, he's going to tell you his story after I'm done talking. But we met, we've talked over many months about potential partnerships in the city, and we decided that a good way for them to get introduced to the city, and for the city to be introduced to them as a partner, and, and as a good business and a local business, would be to do the similar lease for the building down in the public works yard. And it would help generate some revenue for the city in the short term, and establish, establish what we hope is going to be a long-term relationship with this organization, with this company, and with Jake and his family. And we'll hopefully, you know, who knows what, what can happen in the future, but for right now, I think it's something that can generate a little bit of revenue for an underutilized facility. We have a good plan for relocating the public works yard operations, and I have a plan for what, what I'd like to do with that in the future that I'm not ready to share yet, but we, you know, we want to keep things moving forward. The terms of this agreement would be $2,000 a month. It's a three-year agreement, it's really just to kind of dip our toes in the pool and start to explore potential partnerships and see, you know, how they can work with the city, how we can work with them, and like I said, we hope that this is a long-term partnership, and we can do great things for the city going forward with Jake and his family and his company. But if we do something down there, if we do something else, we'll have a different process that we'll need to go through, including the Surplus Land Act, so that'll be a later discussion. But right now, I'd like to turn it over to Jake and let him give a little introduction to the community of who he is, how he got here, how he developed this company, and what he's, his vision is for working with the city.
Yeah, so first off, thank you so much for your consideration. My name's Jake Reisdorf, I'm the owner and operator of Carmel Honey Company. I run it with my family, mainly my mom, my dad, and my sister. I actually started this company back when I was in fifth grade, when I was actually assigned to be a website designer as a fifth-grade project, and I ended up designing a website on GoDaddy about bees and about beekeeping. And from there, I kind of developed this mock company that I presented to my friends and peers in class, and everybody was so enthralled with it, they're like, oh my gosh, can I buy some of your products? And during that, I was like, whoa, I'm not actually doing this, I wasn't even keeping bees at the time, but everybody was like, yeah, if you were doing this, I would totally buy your product. And so from there, I decided to start keeping bees. I started off very small with one hive, and then slowly grew to two hives, then 10 hives, and now we're running about 180 hives spread throughout Carmel Valley and down the coast, so it kind of turned into a much bigger company than I was initially expecting, but we're super excited to work with Delray Oaks. Right now, we have four retail stores, and we're planning on using the space for storage, distribution, and office space. We have some improvements planned to better suit our needs, but we're excited about joining the Delray Oaks community and building our relationship far into the future.
All right, thank you, Jake. So with that, Mayor, we'll turn it back to you guys for any questions.
Wonderful. Excuse me, well, welcome, Jake. Let's go out to the council, any questions, comments? Let's start with Vice Mayor Gagliotti.
Yeah, this is to John. I, I know the answer to the question, I just want to get it out, that, I just, I just want the community to know. The, um, I just, I just want the community to know, uh, just the kind of diligence that we put into, um, like, you know, vetting. That in this potential, uh, leasing, um, and, uh, and just given some of the, the, the mistakes, it's really, you know, you can call them, that we made in the last kind of five, five or 10 years. Um, I just wanted to know what, uh, what analysis, what, uh, what research was done on, on the, on the lease terms and basically coming up with the contract? And then what, um, the, the value, the, uh, you know, where do we come up with the, the two thousand dollars a month?
Right, so, so you all know, we have, uh, David Zender from EPS who's, uh, on contract with us to help us out with, uh, different areas of economic development. One of his specialties is looking at markets like this and evaluating, uh, comparable rent space and, you know, what the value of land is, that type of stuff. So I reached out to him and he did a quick, market rate study for this type of facility. The type of tenant improvements that'll be needed to get this thing up, up to the standards that they need to do this. The type of operation that they want to do and then what is available currently in the, in the region and, and what the rates are going for that. So, yeah, so that the two thousand was well within the range of what would be expected for the square footage down there and the type of facility and the condition that it's in. So it was right in line with what our economic development and, uh, property management expert told us.
And then, and then the second part of that question is, is, uh, um, our lease, uh, you know, I'm sure it's not the same lease that we've, that we've, uh, written or, or contracted with others. On city lands, um, what improvements did we make or, or what, what process did we go through to ensure that this is market, we, you know, a market lease, but then also it gives us the protections that we.
Yeah, so a part, like I mentioned, part of it is the tenant improvements. So Jake and his family are going to do thirty thousand dollars worth of, as, an estimated thirty thousand dollars worth of tenant improvements to the facility. Uh, so that'll be framing it out on the inside, putting in drywall, making it weather tight. And then the city, we agreed as part of this lease agreement, if this is approved, uh, we'll reimburse half of the cost of that because at the end of the lease, we take ownership of that. So, uh, at the, at the very least, at the end of the three years, if we don't go forward beyond that, we get a much improved facility. Also, uh, i- i- if they were to leave for whatever reason, if, you know, Jake went to college or they just decided this, they didn't like doing honey anymore and they needed to get out of the lease, there's a, a provision in there for an eight thousand dollar payment to the city. For getting out of the lease early. Um, so we've, yeah, we've learned some of the mistakes of the past. But also this is a, a local company, uh, one that's established, one that has roots here, wants to develop that further. And so we want to be a partner in, in that with them. And this is kind of dipping, like I said, dipping our toes. It's just three years. It's not a long-term lease. And then if the community feels like this is a good fit and they feel like they're, the community is a good fit for them, then we can talk about future development and how we want to expand into a longer, longer, uh, proposal and what that looks like.
Thank you. No, I don't have any more questions.
Ms. Lin Tell.
Yes, thank you. Um, Jake, what an exciting adventure for you and for Delray Oaks also. Welcome. I'd like to know if you plan any retail from this facility.
Uh, not this moment.
There you go.
Yeah, not this time. Uh, we're not planning on doing any retail out of, uh, out of the facility.
Okay, uh, where do you do retail?
So we have four retail stores. We are a flagship location is in Carmel. In the Carmel Plaza. Uh, we also have one over in Monterey, right next to the Monterey Bay Aquarium and two up in San Francisco. So one in the ferry building and one on Pier thirty-nine.
Okay, great. I'm anxious to try it. Thank you so much.
Okay, uh, Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Um, you know, the city just wouldn't exist without the revenue from the businesses that, that we have in the city and we haven't had a new business in a very long time. And Carmel Honey is going to be a great addition to this city. There's no question about it. Just to give you kind of a little background on kind of how we got here. A while back, I had looked into getting a hive in my own backyard and, uh, realizing that Delray Oaks is one of the few cities that actually have a, has a beekeeping ordinance. And so I, as I was looking and researching how to do that, I came across the Carmel Honey website and I got to see Jake's story and I was very impressed with it. And so I just decided to call one of his stores and I actually talked to his mom. And I don't know if Becky is with Jake right now, but I'm sure when she got that call, she was like, who the heck is this guy and what does he want? So we got the dialogue started and, um, after, uh, a, a bit of talk back and forth, we got the city manager involved, uh, to, to negotiate and kind of get down to some of the details. And that's essentially what we have before us today is the, the, the product of that discussion and, and, uh, that's what's inside the lease. Uh, I couldn't be happier. He's, like I said, going to be a great addition to the city. If you get a chance, uh, look it up on CarmelHoney.com or I'm sorry CarmelHoneyCompany.com. And, and y- y- you'll be able to see exactly what this company's all about. And, and I'm really excited about the future as well and, and the relationship that you heard from Jake that he wants to build with the city. And, uh, that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, thank you Jake for, um, jumping into Delray Oaks. It's great to have you, um, be interested in our city. I was up in San Francisco this summer at the ferry building. I was excited to see your product there. So, um, the, you know, the only question I had was kind of answered. I was looking at the, the tenant improvements. Um, I'm assuming that, you know, you'll be able to stick within that sort of thirty thousand dollar estimate that we won't. It sounds like you'll front everything and then I'm assuming it'll, you know, you'll honestly come back with about thirty thousand and, and let us know if it goes above that. But, uh, other than that, I think it's a great opportunity for the city and, and for your company. So I'm happy for the partnership. Thank you.
Okay, and I too, um, have been following you for a while. Um, I think I had a conversation with you a couple of years ago when you were getting going. Pretty excited about having a young entrepreneur, um, in our region and, uh, potentially in our city. So on that, um, I don't have any questions or comments about the, um, about the contract, um, other than I did see it's for three years. Is that correct, John?
Yes, it's three years with, uh, one-year optional extension. And then anything beyond that will require the surplus land act.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, uh, before we go to the public, really?
Yeah, sorry. I just had one more question. John, I'm assuming you've spoken with Seaside Fire. Um, like, are they okay with someone else having access to the courtyard? I know they have, they're going to have, um, trucks down there. Is there any issue with that?
No, yeah, the, the chief and I talked at length about what the other plans were for the facility there and she was perfectly okay with it. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. That was it. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I had one more. Um, I know John, uh, Mr. Gerton and I have talked about this, but if you could explain, um, the timing with Tamsi and the potential overlap of, of activities there in the next couple of years.
Right, yeah, so we've talked, I've talked with Jake and his family and they're well aware of what the plans are for Fortag. Uh, Jeff has been talking with the Fortag, uh, um, development project team. So they know that we're planning on doing this too. So, uh, we have, I, I'm not expecting any disruptions on the access there, but if there are, we have workarounds on how they can still get access to the building coming through the backside. So, uh, yeah, I don't foresee any problem.
Okay, it's going to be a nicking time for that little corner. Um, let's go to the public, Mr. Allianz.
Thank you, mayor. Um, my question is, I looked at, at the agreement and the clause uncovers utilities. Seems a, a very brief and I just, I don't know, uh, what kind of equipment is going to be, be used in there. Will it be, will there be unusual amounts of electricity required? Uh, because it says the utility costs are included in the lease. So, so that's my one question is, is how much, uh, wh- what? Is there going to be something that's going to be a big drain on electricity coming down the pike that's not covered by the current agreement? And water, I don't know about water too.
Uh, no, so we're not really using any type of heavy machinery. Um, yeah, so we're not really using any type of heavy machinery or anything like that. It's all pretty standard, uh, equipment that we'd be using, just basic lights. Uh, computers, uh, office equipments, that sort of thing.
And the existing bathroom, yeah. Yeah, and, and.
Yeah, so water wise, uh, sink bathroom.
Yeah, and so, and, uh, just a, a technical point. The facilities down there are not metered separately from city hall. So there was really no way to track the separation of utilities down there versus what we're using up here. So just for ease of writing the contract, we just included it into the base rent.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, yes, that's good enough. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? Mr. Clark?
Hi, well, fantastic Jake, way to go. Um, I guess my, uh, one big question would be, there are, um, some people in this, uh, that get a little excited about traffic. So it'd be interesting to know how many daily trips or cars are going in and out of, uh, the yard there. And then the other is, um, if you'd, uh, consider, uh, once a week, kind of farmer's market thing where the Delray Oaks residents can come down and pick up some.
You want to take that Jake?
Yeah, sure. So, uh, traffic wise, um, it would be very minimal. Um, you know, we would just be like, uh, a couple of cars. Uh, I, I wouldn't even imagine daily, maybe every other day, um, to be coming in. So it would be very minimal in terms of, uh, added traffic. Uh, in regards to, um, selling there, uh, that's still something that's, that we're considering, whether or not we have a retail, uh, side to that facility there. So it is a possibility.
Yeah, we, council member Donaldson and I were very, uh, vocal on that point that we would, we would not, not right away, but eventually we would like to get something where even if it's just a once a month thing where people can walk down from their houses and come down and meet Jake and the family and taste some of the product, it would be really, really beneficial for the community.
Okay, any other public comment? Thank you for those. So let's bring it to the council. Um, so to those questions. Thanks Karen. Um, tied to the, those questions, um, is there a retail component? Part of the agreement. I heard office size storage. City manager Gerton?
Yeah, I think you cut off a little bit there. I think you asked if there was any retail that was anticipated in this lease.
Yes.
No, 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 no retail as part of this.
Yeah, so we would need to come back and discuss that if and when Jake were ready and interested?
Yeah, if, if we, uh, you know, if, if this was a partnership that we want to grow and we think that that site is the right site, obviously that's a discussion to have with the community. Uh, and so we would come back, we'd probably start that discussion with the planning commission and, uh, go through the conditional use permit process. But before we get, I, I don't want to put the cart before the horse because before we do any long-range planning for that property, we would have to go through the surplus land act, uh, which is a whole different ball of wax. Not beeswax.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gagliotti?
I'm glad Dennis brought that up when I read, I've read four leases this week and I actually, um, I thought this was triple net. But we don't have sub-meters down there, so we have no way of knowing. Is it, is it possible to put in some sort of, uh, provision to say that if we see a demonstrably, you know, large increase in our, in our electricity bills for whatever reason, be it refrigerator or something like that, that, um, that we can come back and, and, uh, either do an, an assessment or, or just ask for a pro-rata kind of a pro-rata share on the, on the increase of the percentage or something like that. Is it possible to, to make that small change in the, in the terms?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not anticipating seeing a big spike in, in utility usage, but, uh, if we did, we could do that. Also, um, as part of the Fortag project, which we've talked about, there's going to be new infrastructure down there in terms of, uh, electricity and water and because we have new facilities going in, they're going to need additional use. So there will be a new box down there for the electrical and there will be some new metering. Uh, so we'll get that as part of the Fortag project. So that, that property down there will have the ability for sub-metering going into the future.
Okay, that's, that's good to know then. And, and so, um, because yeah, if we're, if we're going to be, you, you know, uh, utilizing this as a commercial space for, for a tenant, then, uh, we would definitely want, I mean, we triple nets there to protect us, right? So we let them do whatever they want, but no.
So, yeah, that's why we're starting small.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thanks, John. I appreciate that. Um, let's go out. Ms. Lin Tell.
Questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson?
I also have no questions and I move that we approve the lease agreement with Carmel Honey for the city building in the public works yard.
All seconded up.
Okay.
Ms. Shirley, any questions, comments?
Nope. I'm in favor.
Okay. Okay, well, let's, um, Karen, could you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Shirley.
Hi.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Hi.
Councilmember Lin Tell.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Gagliotti.
Hi.
Mayor Kerr.
Hi, so it passes unanimously. Jake, welcome to Delray Oaks family.
Awesome, thank you so much.
All right, thanks Jake.
Thanks for coming. All right, so, um, every time I get bumped off, my agenda goes down, so bear with me just a minute. I know we have one additional item to discuss and I believe it's the multi-jurisdictional risk assessment, uh, report. So let's turn that over to city manager Gerton.
All right, thank you, mayor. Um, so, you know, anybody who watches the news knows that, uh, planning for disasters, uh, can't happen too soon. Uh, the county has been a great resource and partner with all of the jurisdictions in the region. Uh, on how do we plan for response to, uh, disasters and more importantly, how do we prepare to mitigate or to avoid them? And so that, that's what this plan is for. Uh, Chris Berquen, our commander, is our expert on this. He works closely with, uh, the county OES and so I'm going to turn this over to him because I don't want to steal his thunder because he does all the great work for us.
Oh goodness. I want to thank, uh, first of all, the mayor and city council for letting me, uh, talk. I haven't been here in a while. So, um, what's going to happen, uh, tonight? I've got Laura Emmons with us. Who's an absolute superstar with Monterey County OES and she's going to answer your hard questions. What you will do tonight, if, uh, you decide to, is adopt resolution twenty or twenty dash twenty, twenty, twenty-two dash, uh, twenty-four, sorry. Which will allow FEMA and Cal OES to approve, uh, this plan. This started, uh, for me back in June, uh, twenty twenty-one. When, uh, it fell on my lap, I contacted Chief Dave Navo over at Seaside Fire Department who said, you know what, you should really talk to Laura Emmons. And so I did. In September, we met with Laura here at the City Hall. She literally walked me through us through the paperwork, what we needed to do. And a week later, she had our draft annex for us to review. So I'm super impressed with her, and I wanted to thank her publicly for all her help. I would not have been able to to get this done without her help. So Laura?
Thank you so much. That is too kind. And I can give a, I'm sorry, I'm having a few technical difficulties, but I can walk through a really brief presentation if that would be useful. Give me one second. Apologies, one more moment. Okay, you know what? I apologize for my technical difficulties. I am just going to provide you a brief overview without a presentation. But it will be quick. So generally, the Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies a broad local vision and guiding principles for reducing hazard risk, and then proposes those specific mitigation actions to reduce vulnerability. This is our third iteration of the Monterey County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. It was first written in two thousand and seven. It was updated in two thousand and sixteen, and this is the two thousand and twenty two update of the plan. It was a very robust update process, so it involved a community outreach, caught twenty public presentations, seventy community forums. We had a steering committee meetings regularly, and then we had those jurisdiction-specific planning meetings that were just mentioned to really talk through what those specific jurisdiction issues and risks were. And then there was really a full rewrite of the plan with new risk assessments, new countywide mitigation strategies. And then in December of two thousand and twenty one through March, it was reviewed by stakeholders and the public. And then it went in March this year to Cal OES and FEMA for review and approval. They sent back the plan as approved pending adoption. So now we're on this last stage of the planning process to get the plan adopted by all jurisdictions. And a really big benefit of this plan is it will make the city eligible for FEMA pre and post disaster mitigation funding. And so the plan generally, to give you an overview of it, is organized into two parts. So volume one is the countywide risk assessment and mitigation actions, because as we know, hazards know no jurisdictional boundaries, so we really look holistically at the whole county. And then volume two has those city-specific annexes. So today, you are generally being asked to adopt all of volume one of the Hazard Mitigation Plan and then the Delray Oaks Annex in volume two. And I apologize, I was not able to share a presentation, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Laura, can you tell us when you were here? Were you here in January or February?
Yeah, I think it was around January or February, so that was part of those public presentations to kind of announce the plan update. And I think that timeline sounds about when it occurred. Just can't remember exactly.
Okay, um, so let's go to the council. Vice Mayor Gagliotti, questions, concerns?
No, I have no, no concerns. I think this is a great idea, so. And 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 we should be happy that we're, we get to participate in.
Yes. I agree. All right, Ms. Lintel.
Yes, I'd like to know what, well, thank you for the the excellent explanation of what it's all about. I appreciate that. But also, I'd like to know how many cities have adopted this? And which are the city?
So all of the incorporated jurisdictions are participating and along with four special districts. So it's been adopted by all four special districts. I think right now, Salinas is currently adopting it, and then only not having adopted it yet will be Sand City and Carmel, and the rest have adopted.
Okay, thank you. Excellent program. Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson?
I have no questions. Councilmember Lintel actually asked the question that I had, but thank you for the information, Laura. Really appreciate it.
And Ms. Shirley?
Um, yeah, thank you, Laura. I I'm just excited that the county is is making this effort for all of us. And we we benefit from this. And so I just have one comment, and this is to our City Manager Gerton. It seems like this would be the perfect document to take and turn into our safety element in our general plan. Since we have no safety element, it seems like, I'm just curious, your thoughts on on taking this information and and helping us put forth a safety element?
This would be something that would be considered if we were to do a general plan update and do a safety element as part of that general plan update. Yeah, but this, no, this wouldn't be, this wouldn't qualify as a safety element for a general plan.
No, I realize, but it seems like it's a good start, right? It's a place to look at when we're when we're thinking about developing a safety, a safety element for a general plan.
Right, yeah, this would inform that board, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm grateful for that. And yeah, thank you, Laura, for bringing this forward.
I too will echo all my colleagues' thoughts about the gratitude. I think this is actually a brilliant model for the count to do an overarching document and then individualizing particular components for cities, especially you know, as we as a region, when a an emergency or some kind of a disaster were to happen, you're right, it does not just affect Delray Oaks. And so have a consistency as well of our as our own individual work that we should be focusing on is invaluable in a way. I would love to see the county do more of these kinds of things. So I don't have any questions. I am full, wholeheartedly for this. So let's go out to the public, if they have any questions. All right, I'm seeing none, so I'll bring it back to the council. Any last minute comments, Vice Mayor?
None.
Okay. Ms. Lintel?
None, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson? Okay, Ms. Shirley?
No, I, in fact, I moved that we approved the adoption of the Resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty four for the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll second that. Any further comments before? Any comments before we vote? All right, Karen, please do a roll call.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Lintel?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gagliotti?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
All right, so it passes unanimously. Thank you, Laura, for all of your hard work, and undoubtedly, we'll be having more presentations from you as we proceed through this process.
Thank you so much for having me this evening.
Bye, thanks. And okay, so that is it for our business. We're gonna move on to staff reports. City Manager Gerton, do you have one? I realize it's not on the agenda, but we would love to hear from you.
Yeah, so it's been a couple of months since we met last time. I I hope everybody here got to attend the park celebration, the reopening celebration, and the ice cream social. It was a great collaborative effort, I think, between everyone, between the Parks and Rec Committee and the Citizens Actions Group. And we got to combine two great purposes to bring everybody together. It was a really good turnout. I was really impressed with the work that the that CAG and and the Parks and Rec Committee did. Obviously, the the work of Ron Fuji, our Public Works Supervisor, none of it would have been possible without what what he does for us on a daily basis, getting stuff ready. But the purpose was to celebrate coming out of COVID, getting back together again. All of the different improvements we've made to the park. So if anybody hasn't been down to the park, I know there's not a lot of people with us left here, but I've been telling everybody, go down to the park. It's great. There's been a notable increase in kids down there playing on the new playground, playing on the big kid swings. We have bocce ball courts, which have been very popular, so if anybody wants to start a tournament, let me know. I'd love to join. And we we have more coming in. We're gonna do a new basketball court. We're going to improve the parking lot. We're going to hopefully address some parking issues in the cul-de-sac at Angeles down there and do some striping, so everybody's clear on parking when there's over, need for overfill parking. But it's been really successful, and like I said, it was a really big team effort, and I really appreciate everybody's work on that. Also, check out the new bathrooms. They're not new, but they look new. They're really refreshed. The kids had a great time putting their handprints on the wall. Terry Laxier, we are so fortunate to have a chair of the Parks and Rec Committee, who also works with kids and is a librarian. Because she she did a ton of work down there corralling the kids and getting them to actually put handprints on the wall and not smudge marks on the wall. And then the mayor and and I don't know how you want to refer to Jerry, Mayor, but your partner, Jerry, were instrumental in going down there and helping then to take what the kids did and turn that into flowers, and it's a real field book. And then Ron's gonna go down there and paint over it to preserve it. And it just brings some life to the park that wasn't there before. You wanted to say something about that, Mayor?
Oh, I just heard you say he's gonna paint over it.
He's gonna put a seal on it.
He's gonna seal it.
He's gonna seal it, right, sorry. Words matter. Yeah, so he's gonna seal it. But it's been really great. And yeah, so that that's the main thing. Other than that, over the two-month break, we've made a lot of progress on doing some updates here at City Hall, implementing some technology upgrades. Hasn't gone as quickly as we'd hoped. COVID is still a thing, and for whatever reason, COVID seems to be a domino effect, even with people who aren't interrelated and don't see each other. Just seems like we get somebody who we rely on, they get COVID, takes them out for a week or two, and then we think, okay, great, we're gonna get going, and then somebody else gets it. So it it delays things. We were hoping to have this meeting as a hybrid meeting. We're just not there yet. We had our first test, had some bugs that we need to work out, so we're still working on it, and we'll get there in September. So everybody, keep your fingers crossed. All right, that's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I want, I'm sure everyone notes in the agenda packet the correspondence, which includes highlights of board meetings and other folks' contributions to the city. On that, we're going to go into a closed session. As stated by Government Code Section fifty four nine five six, the council may adjourn to a closed session to consider specific matters dealing with litigation, personnel, and or labor slash real property negotiations. And before we go in, I'd like to open it up for public comment on any of the items on the closed session item agenda. Anyone have any questions or comments about the three items?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please.
I'd like to say something in regards to City Manager Gerton. We are very lucky to have him. He has been doing such a great job this last year, and I just thought that I'd mention that to you all. That's it.
Thanks, Karen.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other public comments before we move to a closed session? Okay, so for those of you that are in the crowd, you're welcome to stay, and we will report out afterward. You're welcome to stay. If if you don't, I hope you will join us at the next meeting, which is Tuesday, September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty two, at six o'clock. So on that, Karen, will you put us into our room?
You got it.
Okay. Bye.
I know. I know.